February 6th, 2017, meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. Please, please join us and help us create some new...
I applaud you, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, a nation under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Director Zalinski, here. Director Richardson.
She's unable to be here tonight.
Director Honchak.
Here.
Director Duzan.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Schall.
Here.
Director Lendeza.
Here.
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Shaw.
Here. There's a portion of the meeting at the very beginning where we allow members of the audience to ask questions about agenda items in our meeting agenda tonight. Does anyone in the audience have a question on an agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2017 Finance Committee meeting as presented and the minutes of the January 23rd voting meeting as presented. Do we have such a motion?
Second.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move to the second and any discussion? I'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. One exception because you were not at the last meeting. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting and in that executive session, we discussed real estate, personnel, and student. Thank you. I'll turn to Dr. Pfeiffer for the superposition.
Thank you. As everybody's aware, we discussed these meetings in the past where Governor will be previewing his budget. Again, as a reminder, for 2016, we're in 17, we're currently in a $700 million budget shortfall in revenue and approximately a $3 billion structural deficit in the budget. The Governor has insisted that there's going to be more pay for public education. However, he's also said that he's not going to expand personal income tax or is he going to expand other taxes, or sales taxes. I'm a little concerned because even with options such as closing prisons and merging Health and Human Services departments together, I've got a loss to see how they're going to make up that structural deficit and account for revenue shortfall. The revenue that they've had from impact fees for the shale of gas extraction is about 7% lower than what they anticipated, so I don't see that severance tax on the shale of gas is going to be popular or approved this year if the justification for not putting the extraction tax on the shale, because it could be damaging to revenue and prospects of the expansion of the industry. So tomorrow's going to be interesting to see how they plan to balance that budget and increase funding for education or at least maintain funding for education if he doesn't have that. One of the things that had been discussed, which is currently on hold, on hold in the legislature, is the proposal to eliminate the property tax. Now, again, if you recall from our last meeting, we discussed that 90% of our local tax, our local revenue source comes from property taxes. So where that is, or if they're going to bring that back to the drawing board and refine the language of the proposal, I'm not aware, but as of now, it's on hold. So moving ahead and looking at our own circumstances and our own budget, you know, what we're getting from the federal government, and that's why I'm very interested to see what happens with the Betsy DeVos hearings and what happens to the state government, has such an impact on a little district like Carlington, because we really can't go to dwell of increased property taxes over and over again. So it's crucial for us to continue to operate, provide services at the level we provide them, to be able to ensure that at least we're getting the same revenue amount from state and federal sources that we received in prior years. So we're going to be looking at as we move ahead and getting into the budget process. The other thing I want to encourage, as the board has flyers in front of them, on February 17th, there's an evening with Brittany Mayer, I believe, the 16th?
Sixteenth.
The 16th, which is a Thursday. And I believe she hasn't made from that, I don't know what it says. So I think she's very talented, keenness, and has overcome a lot to perform. It's an interesting opportunity to have an artist like that here at the district and support our best buddies program, so if there's opportunity for the public, it's going to be a nice evening playing piano music. And that's about all I have at this point.
Is this possible?
That's a good question. We had Director Apple, as referenced, we had a very generous gift from Mike Raggo's family, 1921, ran that piano.
So it's not piano?
Why? I don't know if it's...
Is it here yet?
It's here. And so Shaw has a photo of it on her website. It looks like a nice walnut, hunk of honey color.
I can give you a little bit of elimination on that. They have to dismantle that in order to put it in the coral room. So that, and that, and at this point, it also needs to be serviced, so I gave Ms. Chenet the phone number of a friend of mine who does the piano tune for Carnegie Mellon and the Symphony. And it is, it's a beautiful instrument. There is a Yamaha baby grand on the stage, and I imagine that's what they will be using. But, you know, you have to put it on the side to get it through the door, because those are not double doors in the coral chamber, so you can't go, once it's in there, it's in there without taking the part in.
But this beautiful grand piano, why is it on the stage?
Well, because there is already a grand piano on stage, and you don't really have room to put two on the stage.
But it was such a generous offer, and Betsy DeSoro was really kind with me, Mike Raggo and the district, to donate this piano, which had been mainly heirloom for them dating back to 1921. And we put it for the music department, and I asked Russ Markow, who should be able to use it to build buildings that they felt the stage area was almost too small, the room area was small. But it's such a generous, you know, how do you throw that down?
And the piano is, Rebecca dated it, it goes, it's from the mid-1800s.
Ken.
Right. And your practical life of the Stein was about 100 years, Yamahas were about 25, Aldens were about 50, so it's a beautiful instrument.
It's like a Greenwich, and what they said, a Greenwich and something was the maker of the piano.
Yeah. So, and when you look at those keys, it is, you know, they don't make keys out of a library anymore. This is...
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's a...
Very, very beautiful instrument.
And I wrote him, Mr. Raggo, thank you on behalf of the district for your generosity and, you know, all the love, warm love to go for kids to use that piano.
So now I'd like to go over to Mrs. Wilson.
Hello. I apologize for missing last month. I missed you all. We had a PTA meeting scheduled for that same time. So John represented me the last board meeting, and I'm glad to be back. So you received a bigger package, but only because I included last month's newsletter. You don't want you to miss out, and this month's newsletter. So the top one was this month. Great things going on in Carlington, and we continue to work through recess before lunch, and the PTA has also embraced it and have done like a toy collection, games, toys, things like that, and the parents were plentiful and brought in so many different things. The parents have also done a rotating, they're taking their time to rotate games, so the kids don't get bored with the same old ones, and taking the time to, if Candyland is missing 17 pieces, they're going through and finding those pieces and putting it together. So this is so much nicer for our kids to have, they're playing with those big blocks and they're playing Operation and just more like games that you didn't see all the time. It's not just sitting there, sitting there coloring, though they do enjoy that at times as well. So that's been going really well. Carnegie and John and I have been working on kindergarten registration, so Carnegie's is March 29th, Crafton's will be March 30th. We are doing it a little different, fish, separate from Carnegie. Carnegie's doing it the traditional way that the parents will bring the students in, register, and do the screenings for the children on the same day. After talking to the Crafton staff and people who have been there, we've noticed maybe a decrease in parents registering on that specific day, so we thought a way to maybe get more kids to screen, because that's really the purpose, is get that data so we can prepare our teachers for that instruction. We are having them register on the 30th with all their paperwork, but then we're going to give the parents an appointment day, and we're going to do our screenings closer to June, probably the last few days of May. And that will be helpful because we will also have, it will be less of a gap between the end of the school year and the beginning of when else start kindergarten. For a four or five-year-old, March and May can be a big difference, so we'll get that data. We're going to pilot it, see how it goes, and keep Carnegie, you know, abreast of if it seems helpful. Last year, we had only about 15 families register, and that was, that was tough. We didn't have the data, we didn't have the screening, so we thought, maybe this might be helpful for the parent knows ahead of time of the appointment. So that's a little change. I'll keep you posted on how that, how that goes. Let's see. I did include on the end of the newsletter, just an update, I've kind of updated you throughout the year about our pathways partnership with the Carnegie Science Center and STEM. I gave you the action plan at the beginning, here's our progress so far. So we are progressing through our two different SMART goals that we've made, one of them being creating more business partnerships, collaborations, bringing in people to be part of STEM, and not just like a one-time, come in and speak, and then never talk to them yet. So we're working on finding out who might, like reaching out to businesses, seeing if anybody has any connections. It was really interesting, today I met with Voting Corral, and you wouldn't think that would be a huge platform, but they're talking about sponsoring field trips there, like paying for our buses, which is interesting. They'll do nutrition, they'll do culinary art-type field trips. They already gave us some teacher and student incentives, like free meal, like a free meal for adults and children. They want to partner with us with food drives, so if we're doing a particular food drive, they want to put a big box in the voting crowd and collect things for us. And then, like, we were talking about a fundraiser, where it would be a spirit day, where we're going to invite the community, come to voting crowd, and they would give us a 15% if anybody came in. So they're really, they really want to partner and create that type of community with us. It was very exciting, so seeing these SMART goals come to life is worth it. And then, what's not in here, I don't think I put in there, but just that update, Read Across America is coming up for both of us, Crafton and Carnegie. It is the week of February 27th. So we have some exciting people coming in to read. The Queen of Hearts will come in and read to our little ones, and she dresses as the Queen of Hearts, and the little ones are really excited about it. We do have an author coming in from Pittsburgh, his name's Howard Shapiro, and he's written a book called Hockey Days and other kind of books that go with it about hockey. So he will be there to do an assembly for our students and sell books, of course, but also autograph them if they're interested. And of course, therapy dogs, Humane Society will be present. Everybody likes that. And I see reading with Rover, that's kind of the same thing. And then we have guest readers coming in, bring in the community firefighters, Chief Sumter's coming, I think some of you are, might be coming in to read as well. So look for that coming at the end of February. And I think that's about it. That's what it's saying. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Chris.
I have one item to note this evening. I'll be attending a meeting sponsored by the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium on February 24th. At this meeting, the consortium is going to announce the rates for the renewal on July 1st of 2017. I wanted to remind the board that we currently are budgeting a 3% increase. Hopefully, the rates will be less than that. I'll read one of that next meeting. Thank you.
Kirk, a quick question. Historically, the last couple of years, the rate increase ballpark has been...
Under 5%.
Under 5%. Was. I'm all right with that. Mr. Man.
Thank you. I just want to bring back attention to the board, something we talked about about two months ago, that our fourth grade students were selected to take the National Assessment of Educational Progress test, also known as NATE. The fourth grade students will be from the Carnegie Elementary School. Just a little more information I have since the last time we talked about it was that these tests are going to be given to our fourth grade students. The results are called a national, the nation's report card, because it measures student achievement across the country. Now, NATE is a different type of test than the state test that we're normally given, because it does represent students across the nation and not about, you know, just across their state. The assessment results, again, like I said, are released as a nation's report card, and they help the president, Congress, and all of our educators make decisions about how to improve our educational system. NATE is what the general public hears about when you turn on the news and the supporters discuss what the students are learning. Our tests are going to come on March 9th, 2017. They're going to take about an hour and 20 minutes. The students are going to take tests in mathematics or reading, language arts, they do not take both of them, and some of them are going to take it in a paper and pencil format, some of them are going to take it in an electronic format on tablets. And not only are they going to be asked questions about, you know, picture ELA topics or mathematical topics, but they're also going to ask questions about their educational experience that they've, as related to performance, such as homework, reading habits, and things of that nature there. The student scores are going to be anonymous, so they don't get anything attributed back to the students, and will not affect the students' grade or academic records in any way. Instead, they kind of go into a big pot, and they're combined with the scores of other students across the country to respect, excuse me, to produce results that reflect students' capability nationwide. So I remember last time I brought it up, I just want to give you kind of more information of what that is and what our students are going to be doing starting on March 9th. And we already have all the preparations made. Myself and Mr. McAdoo went through an entire process with the NATE organization, you have any prepared for this thing, so.
No, but if I recall, we get randomly selected for that.
Yes.
Because when I went to Allegheny, you were all selected for that, and it's not an annual test, you know, they give it, different schools get selected, so you could have one school in Allegheny and not have another school in the high school, and it's a national norm test. But, you know, once you get sort of selected to do it, you really don't have an option not to do it.
Right. We're kind of in that pool because we're a Title I school, and because it's a Title I fund, we get put into a pool if you're selected to do it. This is our, this is the first time I've ever encountered this particular test, so it's been an learning experience.
When I was middle school principal at Allegheny, you were selected to do it. And it's interesting that, you get back, because it's national norm, it's interesting.
I think it's the older, we, there is to compare.
Or something like the SATs or...
Yeah.
But this wouldn't be a test where the kids have to study for it and do that.
No, it's going to be based on, you know, things that they should be learning because they're very likely to do.
It's like the way you do California tests used to be, so it's a national norm test, you're going to see that kids, or maybe the fair nose being a little bit better.
I'm looking forward to it, because I've never experienced this one before, because it's going to be a real big one, and it's going to be well, I'm going to keep a close eye on what it is and how it works.
But it, but it's not an annual, it's not like kids get it every year, so we may not be selected again for it for about 15 years, 20 years, but for this particular administration of it, you're selected.
You're selected.
It's just Carnegie.
Just Carnegie. I'm correct. Sorry. Don't get to play this time.
Since it's federally required by that, I mean, I was thinking about if the parents choose for their kids to opt for this later, is it everybody in fourth grade?
There's going to be a letter sent out to the parents, if they haven't been sent out already, to the fourth graders at that school, and it lists all the instructions. I'm sure there's an opt-out process, but I think, you know, we're asked to make sure that we encourage everybody, because again, it's not something, it's stressful, it's not, you know, they're going to do the best they can, their names not put on the scores. So, you know, we're hoping we can get enough participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Man. That concludes this year of reports.
Moving on to the miscellaneous section of the meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the 2016-2017 conference and field trip requests as submitted. Right, you move by the second.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion? I'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. Under section number two, finance, we have two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, the MOU between the district and the Allegheny County Department of Human Services Office of Children, Youth, and Families Agreement as presented. And number two, the MOU between the district and the Allegheny County Department of Human Services Office of Children, Youth, and Families Transportation Procedures as presented. I have a motion for those two items.
I agree.
Move by the second.
Second.
Move the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. Under section three, personnel, we have six items to approve. I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, the resignation of Dr. Hillary Magnus, Coordinator of Special Education and Student Services, effective on or about March 31st, 2017, as submitted. Number two, the leave of absence for the 2016-2017 school year for employees number CFT 1617-06 and SCA 1617-07. Number three, the reassignment of Rachel Wulery to the position of Class III Instructional Aid at Crafton Elementary, effective immediately under the terms of the SCA Collective, Harvard and Union Agreement. Number four, assign the following teachers to after-school tutoring positions for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year. Positions will be funded by the Ready to Learn Grant. Reading, Carnegie Elementary, Diane Christ and Lindsay Worowski. Crafton Elementary, Caitlin Neal and Chelsea Friss. Math, Carnegie Elementary, Cynthia Bevan and Mary Campbell. Crafton Elementary, Kathleen Halford and Chelsea Friss. Number five, the proposal for the Carlington Academic Summer Program to be held at Carnegie Elementary, June 19th through July 14th, 2017, from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. for students in grade four to 12 with IEPs, and to post for the positions of three special education teachers to provide reading, writing, and math instruction. Teachers will be compensated at the per diem rate.
If I could just add, this is the program that Brian Herowitz, those over at Carnegie, it's access funded, so that's all coming from access funding.
And item number six, under personnel, is the addition to the 2016-2017 DAD substitute list as presented. Do I have a motion for those six?
Sure.
Move by the second. Move the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. And a quick thank you to Dr. Hillary Magnus, who's been a phenomenal resource to our district and amazing, and we will miss her dearly, so. Thank you, Hillary. Number four, student matters. I'll entertain a motion to approve the education, adjudication, sorry, adjudication agreement for student number SM 1617-03 as the... Move by the second. Move the second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. Old business, any director of any old business they would like to bring up tonight? Nothing. New business, any director of any new business they would like to do space? All right. Open forum, anyone in the audience have any questions for the board?
Well, I just signed up to say something.
Please say.
First off, I want to say I've been at a school board meeting in a while, wow. That's really something. In the past, some of you may know, we've done the pipe to the arts celebration. Last year, with the timing of things, we were not able to do that. Earlier in the year, one of our service days, Mrs. Wilson and Mr. McAdoo gave us some lead to go out and reach out to the community, and Mr. Pfeiffer had encouraged us last year to try to make some connections at the Carnegie Library and Carnegie Company. And so we had, we went up and had an impromptu meeting with Margaret Forbes, who runs that up there. It was myself, Mary Faro, Diane Christ, Michelle Smaller, my mother by Anderson was there for part of the day, but I don't remember if she was there at that portion. And so what we did is we planned, what had been, in the past, is we had set up in the cafeteria here, it was pretty much a mob scene, and everything had to be taken down right away. We were looking for an opportunity in the space to have artwork up for a little bit, at least a little bit longer. So on March 24th and 25th, and invitations will be forthcoming, but I didn't want to, like, spring things on people at the last minute, because everybody has busy schedules. And that's a Friday and a Saturday. We'll be doing from 6:00 to 9:00, just open, a little less structured. The doors will be open, they have a room in the back by the, by the music hall. That is, I'll let you, about the square footage of the library here, a lot of bare brick, high ceilings, very interesting, and we'll be displaying selected artwork in there, and then while we're doing that, we're going to have a couple stations set up where we'll have students playing some solos and duets. While that's going on, not in a formal structure, more like a gallery setting, so people aren't going to be sitting down, and just people will be wandering out around. I believe that Diane also secured a grant for some, some refreshments to be served during this. And then on Saturday, I believe the hours are 11:00 to 6:00, there'll be some, some performances at noon, two, and then we're, and we're still populating with these performances we'll be doing. At 5:00, there'll be some larger, louder type groups that will actually be in the music hall at 5:00 to kind of end the weekend. And, you know, we've been working hard to put this together, because, you know, obviously, this board in particular was very keen on maintaining community schools as one of the things that adds the flavor and spice of Carlington, and really is appealing to a lot of people. And obviously, there's a lot more starting to happen in Carnegie, and it's going to, I think, we're going to see a real change in the demographics there. And I think one of the things that really appeals to people, I think, or almost everybody hears, I either taught in teaching your child in the band, and obviously, Mr. Honchari had his son in the, in the high school, and, you know, that one, you know, where that happened. This is one of the things I really think, traditionally for the district our size, has a fairly large music and art program, and I think that's one of the things that's really made us outstanding and really has helped us to stand out. And so this is just one of our ways to try to make sure we can continue pushing that awareness out there of what we're doing in the school.
So please reiterate, what are the, what are the dates?
It's Friday the 24th of March and Saturday the 25th of March. And Diane got a grant to, to make invitations and mail them out, so those will be forthcoming from the art department, but, you know, everybody's calendar's busy, I don't know what you're, you know, the calendars on everybody's calendars still look fast, so I wanted to make sure I got the information to you and while there's still time. And I know Mr. Pfeiffer and Mrs. Wilson know that we're hosting a PMEA elementary district band on May 12th and 13th. The concert will be 2:00 on the 13th. And that one, there was actually, I think that's a $5 charge at the door. Although, yeah, I can sort of see where this encompasses, I'm the one running it. That'll have students from 65 school districts will be participating, we'll have an neighborhood of 150 students on stage, and hopefully, there won't be any, any wrestling meets scheduled for that day, because the party, there will probably be an neighborhood of 300 callers, I'd imagine, added to our party. So that event is also coming up. We've, I've... I, I've sponsored, I think this is, Michelle will probably know better than me. I think in the twenty-one years I've been at Carlington, I think I've hosted one, two, three, four, maybe four or thirteen events like, you know, of this kind of nature. So I ended up doing it often because I've done it so many times, it's pretty easy at this point for me. Though I was glad to see Todd last weekend having gotten his feet wet with his first hosting of WAM's last Saturday. So that's all. And I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, ruin the record for the past, it's been dependent. So, sure. And, and, already blew it. So any questions for me?
Do you need anything from the district for the toy, those that are made small and fourteen, those that may?
I believe we're, we're already covered in that. Rosemary will be our nurse on call. I've already been in contact with food services and worked out my budget for that. The district doesn't pay for this week. It's, it's budgeted. I've already been in contact with Dennis about, about that. Right now, we're the only thing on the calendar for the, for, that's for Saturday. I'm hoping we can.
stays that way.
Russ, we'll probably have to shuttle people.
We didn't have to the last time. We've done that in the past. People just part.
Sixty-five school districts?
Yeah, but it's a hundred and fifty students. You can probably figure probably one and a half cars per student because you probably have parents and some grandparents. So, yeah, it's going to be a lot of cars. And I, I don't think we have the ability to shuttle. I actually had the conversation with, with Dr. Pfeifer. And that was, that was when Betsy was on the board, we ran that shuttle from Starters Country Club, or Starters, yeah, Starters Country Club. I don't know that we would have the capacity, although that would be a nice thing to have if we still have that capacity, but I don't know if we do.
Well, we shut for the bed, we did it from parking lot in the engineering building.
Below.
Right below.
Okay, oh, okay.
So we could explore it again.
Okay, all right. I, I wasn't aware that we had done that. Any other questions?
Thank you just for continuing to take on the extra work to make us a, an arts district because that's important to us.
I appreciate it. And like you said, I think that's one of the things that we could really be a selling point. When I came here twenty-one years ago, we were, we were under staff and they had the Middle States, the recommendation at that time was pretty bleak. And they made some pretty strong recommendations about what they thought the district should be approved and we did this. We made those changes twenty years ago. And that's what things were starting to happen because as Mr. Hanchar may remember, I gave eighteen kids on the field when I came. And there was one large class of seven through twelve.
I think that was eighteen kids. Eighteen kids from seven to twelve.
Yeah, it was eighteen kids, seven through twelve.
Well, I would say, Russ, too, if we wanted to, we could work with the Education Collaborative and they'll be here to speak to the whole faculty and service in seventeen.
Oh, they're speaking that way? I thought they were just speaking to the arts and music teachers.
No, they're going to touch base with you guys later, but Sarah and Matt Sepur are going to talk to everybody. Russ has been involved with that and that helped us to rework certain things in our arts curriculum.
That's right.
And they've done an assessment and they're going to present that to everybody.
And that's been, I was in their leadership program eight years ago. Again, thank you for the opportunity and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Russ.
I'm sorry to ruin the record.
So there's another request for, are you Lisa?
Yes, I am. Okay, I'm Lisa Smith. What I'm here for is in regards to scoreboard, school board policy manual specifically nine N six. I'd like to request a petition, a private meeting with the school board. I follow the rules for nine N six to go all the way up the steps to get to where I am now. And so I'm, I know I'm not allowed to discuss teachers or administration by name, so I won't do that. But I do have some issues that I need to be taken care of with my son and with certain staff. So I'm petitioning the school board for a private meeting.
We definitely take every request and every issue that a family might have very seriously. Dr. Pfeifer is our pinnacle of the escalation process of if you have not yet talked to Dr. Pfeifer, I suggest you guys.
I don't know, it's a while to say this. I did send Dr. Pfeifer an email. I did not get any reply yet. I asked for a meeting. I did not expect to get the meeting immediately, but I did expect a phone call within two days to schedule a meeting and I have yet to get that, which is why I'm here now because I didn't want to wait a whole month for another meeting to request this.
Thank you for coming up and I think if you're okay, you guys can talk right afterwards and find a date and a time that works for both of you. And if, if you're, you'll find satisfaction in getting the time, but if you still have any issues, please don't hesitate to come back.
Okay, do I have to wait for another board meeting to petition this or can I send an email?
I can discuss things with you right now.
We'll, we'll end the meeting and you two can talk. And before you leave, like you should feel satisfied that you've got a, a date and a time that works for you and for.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for your tone and thank you for coming and approaching us. I appreciate it. Any other questions from the audience, any other comments? If not, back to the board, any open forum items? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Aye, sir.
Move to the second, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? You ready?